I was, I was. She grew up here. So I read here. But yeah, I'm across the age. Lots of trees and people. So. Little water. Like Portland. So then once we got married. Thank you all. Actually, since we were married. So. So we're really, we all run into each other all the time. I see at least. I see probably ten, twelve years.
I did. That's good. Yeah, I felt like I didn't need to.
Hey, how are you?
How you doing?
Good to see you. Good to see you too. Who's the restroom floor? Where are you, boy? Evening Stan, how are you? Okay. Okay, alright. Lady. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. We still have a couple of minutes before we start, but just as a reminder, if you would like to speak during public comment, please sign up in the back of the room at the public comment sign-in sheet. Uh, thank you very much. We'll be getting going here in a couple of minutes. Good evening, all. We're gonna call this meeting to order at 6:30, meeting of the school board. Would you all join the school board in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to this republic, to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item three. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
None.
No adjustments to the agenda. Moving on to agenda item four, approval of the school board meeting minutes dated November 20th, 2019. Is there a motion? School Board Cheyman.
I approve the school board meeting minutes dated November 20th, 2019.
There's been a motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? For roll call vote, school board member Abramson.
Aye.
School Board Member Walters.
Yes.
School Board Member Cheyman.
Yes.
School Board Member Tardif.
Yes.
School Board Member Mazden. And school board member Johnston. The motion carries six oh. Moving on to, is there, are there any correspondence under agenda, uh, agenda item five?
Uh, no, I'll cover those under my superintendent report.
Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item six, public comment. Before public comment begins, I just want to remind folks that all speakers must identify themselves as they begin talking. Speakers are not permitted to share gossip, make defamatory comments, or use abuse of or vulgar language. The mayor has the authority to stop any presentation which violates the public participation guidelines or privacy rights of others. Persons who disrupt the meeting may be asked to leave, and the mayor may request law enforcement assistance if necessary to restore order. That is under the public participation at Saco school board meeting, uh, guidelines. With that, we have Jen Bradford up first.
Hello. My name's Jen Bradford. I am an employee of the Saco school department. I am the human resources manager, and I am here tonight speaking on behalf of the staff of our central office. The staff of central office would like to take, to take a moment to express our support for our superintendent Dominic DePatsy. We've had the opportunity to work with Dom in the day-to-day operations for Saco schools for over the last four and a half years, and feel his leadership has moved our district forward for both students and employees. There are staff members who have signed this letter that I'm reading tonight, who have over twenty years of service to Saco schools. I myself have, uh, ten years with four superintendents during that tenure that I've been here. We witnessed the difficult decisions that are made in the best interests of our students and staff, as well as the criticism that Dom has received for some of those decisions. Unfortunately, the negative voices are louder than the positive feedback that he receives. The things he has accomplished that seem to overshadow, uh, that are overshadowed by some include creating a collaborative district with a strategic plan. We didn't have that previously. A unified professional growth and development process, as well as creating a successful pre-K program ahead of any other community in the area, one that is almost fully at capacity. And despite the obstacles that are faced, he's accomplished all of these things. Dom has helped to, uh, create and finalize a school construction plan that has placed Saco schools on the state's school construction list, and has implemented a paths program that benefits some of our neediest students. Those are just a few of the things that I can name. He supports his staff through professional development, coaching, and an open door policy. A quote by Henry Kissinger says that "the task of a leader is to get his people from where they are to where they have not been." Dominic DePatsy has done great things for our district and has brought us to a new level of learning and growth, both for students and staff. Those of us who work for him at central office would hate to lose the leadership and the management for our district and the day-to-day interactions that we have with him as the superintendent of Saco schools. I could go on, but I think that that covers the basics. Um, and the folks that have signed this, uh, letter that was written, Mike Garrity, Maintenance and Transportation Director, eighteen years with Saco schools. Myself, Human Resources, ten years with Saco schools. Karen Merrill, Accounts Payable, twenty-three years with Saco schools. Carrie Grenier, Special Services Secretary, fourteen years with Saco schools. Karen Danley, Special Services Administrative Assistant, twenty years with Saco schools. Amanda Brusseau, Payroll, three years. Jason DiDonato, Finance Director, twelve years. Celeste Hatch, Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent, ten years. Jen Partridge, Central Office Administrative Assistant, seven years. And Stacy Nass, Data Manager, five years. That's a lot of experience with the Saco school department, and we all support Dominic and would like to see him stay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is David Lenoir.
Evening, Mayor, Council. My name is David Lenoir. I've been young school ever since we put it on the foundation. Now, when we put it there, it was in pretty good shape, but it isn't now. When our ventilation system at the top, it's blowing carbon into the rooms. You go check them, they're there. How long have we gotta wait? Some of the teachers are complaining already about scratching this in their throats. They go home on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, they feel good. They come into the school about Tuesday morning, it's developing a problem. What are we gonna do? Now, somebody's made a complaint, they're gonna tear up the carpets in one room because a parent has made a complaint about her son having a respiratory problem, I guess is what it is. That's one room, but we have several others. These rugs have been there since the school was put there. It has no backing. We have to wash them in the spring of the year, we have to do them. Where there's no backing, the cob, the wood underneath, there's buckling, it wobbles, and some places are starting to rot. You people walked through my school, you said it was clean. Yes, it is, the surface part we keep as possible. But what are we gonna do about the ventilation system? My recommendation, I'm not an expert, but I'd go to the outside and I'd get me a ventilation person to come in and inspect it, then go from there. When you have teachers complaining about scratchy throats and irritation of the eyes and stuff, it's time to move before it's too late. I thank you for your time.
Dave, just for the record, your address, please.
Twenty-six Ross Road, Saco Main, oh four oh seven two.
Up next is Lynn Tilson.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Tilson. I am a president and CEO of a nonprofit. I'm a Saco resident, and I'm a Thornton Academy graduate. I've had a child in the Saco school system for, she's now a senior, she's had an IEP since prior to kindergarten. I put my trust in the Saco school board, the Saco school district, the teachers and the principals, and each year I watched her struggle over and over again without gains. I'd reach out to Jen Norman with no response. I reached out to Mike Pulsofer. He looked at me blankly and said, "I defer to Jen. She's in charge of the department." It wasn't until the end of sixth grade, that she was reading at a third grade reading level, and I actually had the principal of the school at the time look at me and say, "Maybe you need to think that this is just as good as it's going to get." What? I, and, who says that? We then went out of the school district for testing, hired our own testing, we hired an advocate. You'd be amazed at what happens when you have an advocate, and the written notices you receive that actually have minutes on the back of them. We, and, we found out that she needed to, uh, learn her reading through Lyndon Mood Bell. We were able through the advocate to get a teacher that was instructed, one, and the entire school had that, that, um, program. It lasted a year because she left the school district. So after that, she continued to get help with ed techs, but had no gain because they weren't properly trained. At the end of her freshman year, I had had it. She was at a fourth grade reading level at freshman year. It was then that I contacted Dominic. He showed up at my IEP meeting 'cause I was done with Jen. He showed up, he looked at her file, he realized what she needed, he realized that the Saco school system had failed her. Since Dominic's involvement, she's now reading at a high school grade level, so you can already tell that they missed the ball. She's still far behind, but it's because of Dominic's involvement in this, in this, and caring about the Saco school system that she's actually making gains. And I will tell you that Dominic probably saved Saco's reputation. I was getting ready to go to due process, and I wasn't the only one. There was a large handful of parents that we were gathering together, having coffee, talking about going to the press about Saco's dirty little secret. Dominic saved that. I want to applaud Dominic for truly caring about the kids.
Thank you. Next up is Kevin LaFortune. Uh, and as a reminder, folks, just make sure to please speak into the microphone, and also, uh, a three-minute time limit, please.
Good evening. Kevin LaFortune, six P, Body Lane. So, this book I have in my hand is the Maine School Board Association Handbook. It's known as a guide for Maine school boards, members, and Maine school superintendents. Okay, this is an invaluable resource that you probably all have. If you haven't, you need to get a copy of it, and you need to read it cover to cover. If you haven't looked at it recently, um, I'd like to highlight a passage that is really important this evening in particular. It's under the, uh, the section, um, talking about the superintendent role and the relationship with the board. So this section, um, has a number of things that are codified in some of the policies that are already on the books for you, but this particular passage is really important to hear, uh, as a school board. New board members often ask whether the board is really just a rubber stamp for the superintendent's recommendations. The answer is clearly no. Effective public education requires strong school boards and strong superintendents working together to lead the school unit. This demands a working relationship based upon respect, good communication, and good information. The board should look to the superintendent as the school unit's educational leader and request the information needed to make sound policy decisions and set direction for the unit. Board members should be confident that they understand recommendations from the superintendent before they vote. Don't be afraid to say, "Put, put it in language I can understand and convince me." The superintendent should understand that the board is the elected, is elected to represent the community and its interests, and to advocate for students, and to support the improvements in the educational program. So, I think from any casual observer, it's quite clear that this situation does not currently exist in Saco, and that lack of, of it existing is impacting your ability to be an effective school board. When you enter, when you enter executive session later to discuss renewal of the superintendent's contract, you need, you each need to ask yourselves one question. If you're going to vote yes for renewal, what is going to be different going forward? Okay, you can't just renew the contract and then go back to business as usual. You have a problem, you need to fix it. Okay, if you fail to do anything about the problem, evenings like this are gonna become the norm, and worst off, you will probably find yourselves in the same situation that the Scarborough School Board found themselves in last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, up next is Mallory Pastor.
Hello. Uh, so yes, Mallory Pastor, I live at Three Hodgman Avenue in Saco. Um, I come here tonight, um, exhausted, actually. I come here exhausted, um, because as of last Thursday, I was aware that Burns had six hundred and five students. As of this Friday, it'll have six hundred and four, because my husband and I have made the decision that it is not a good place for my child. Um, and I have a three-year-old, and I am gonna set up for both of them what's right for them. Uh, my daughter went to Fairfield, and we had a pretty good time. I called it the Fairfield Bubble. Um, it was so tiny, uh, my daughter was well taken care of. It had its shortcomings, um, but we were taken care of. And when I was looking at your agenda tonight, right at the top, it says "effective communication." I am a communicator by trade, it's what I do, um, so it's very important to me, um, to get problems solved, open communication, face-to-face communication, timely communication. So, I used to hear that Saco was a really great place to send your child. I grew up on Old Orchard Beach, under Mike Pulsofer. I survived that. And I was always told, uh, in Old Orchard, we kind of were, you know, the backyard kids, and we'd come to Saco and it would be great. I believed that when I decided to move to Saco, um, because you have this sort of shining star that is Thornton. And so I bought a house here and was excited to get into the school system, I believe in public school. I have been gravely let down. My child came home, she lost her spirit for school. She was being bullied. She was constantly distracted in her classroom, um, and recess was being cut, recess time was being cut, um, time in art class was being cut, and when I say "cut," I mean "cut in two," um, because there were constant disruptions in the classroom. And the whole class suffered for that, and I don't believe it ate that, you know, what's good for the whole is, 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 is good for the sum. So, that was really hard. Uh, my daughter suffers from anxiety, we have her in therapy, um, and so moving into Burns was gonna be a challenge anyways because transition is hard. I tried to communicate that to her teacher, um, about three weeks before school started. I just wanted five minutes on the phone with her teacher. She did not respond to me until the day of open house. She asked me to have that conversation, that very sensitive conversation, with her at open house, with all eighteen kids and their parents in a very busy classroom. This was after the third misstep of communication. So already, I am trying to cheer my daughter on into Burns, and it was already ruined. My time's up. Mr. DePatsy, I don't have much to say about you. I can email you some comments, um, because I have learned that this is a common thing, and a lot of these kids are now in middle school and suffering. So whatever happens to you, that's fine, I just felt like I needed to come and tell you those things. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Sarah Truman. Truman, sorry. Thank you.
My name's Sarah Truman. I am at eleven lock. I am here tonight, I'm, I'm sure some of you had already heard that I started a petition last week, um, about the renewal for the superintendent's contract. I did that because at a previous school board meeting, um, a staff member had made a petition. I did that because at a previous school board meeting, a staff member had made a comment about how there were just a few people who were making complaints and a lot of loud noise. And I decided to, last week, decided that I should try to show these people that I knew that there were more than just a handful of people making complaints that were unhappy with the way the pre-K expansion had been going. And I just want to back up a little bit there and just say that my middle child was in the pilot program last year. And despite a bumpy road for the first month or six weeks, and wondering if we had done the wrong thing, he did amazing, his teacher was amazing, the ed tech was amazing, he had a great time. He learned a lot, and his teacher this year in kindergarten over at Fairfield has had, has flying colors to say about the pre-K program. I'll stop there. However, with the expansion that I was told about was happening, I learned about it in January, and I thought it was kind of weird to have a pilot program for three months and then decide to expand and not have a place to put it. And then every time I would talk to somebody about the program, I learned, oh, we're going to do modulars, they're going to go over at Young. And then a couple months later, we're not doing the modulars, we're going to find something else. And then they find the Toddlin, and then the Toddlin turned into the almost $200,000 fiasco between legal fees and paid lease, monthly leases that we've paid for, for what? And I feel like these expansion programs are being done hastily. With the date program that's over at Fairfield that has now taken away art and music, which are now on a cart, which now I understand the library's going to be on a cart instead. There's plenty of other things that we should be focusing on instead of expanding programs before you're actually ready to do those things. And again, I'm 100% on board with pre-K. I just think it needs to be done right. It's that a lot of parents did not feel great about the start of the school year this year. I have other complaints I could go into about Burns, and I think Fairfield's a great school. I think the playground is a huge issue, that should have been tackled. I mean, there's, they seem silly, but when kids are looking at a playground and they're sitting, it's in a swamp, and they can't play and they have to stay on pavement, my kid comes home every day and is like, what the hell? For lack of a better term. But anyway, I started this petition and I bullieded the reasons why I think that the superintendent should not be renewed. And there were 310 people that have signed as of 6:15 tonight.
Next up is Tristan Thompson.
I'm Tristan Thompson. I just recently moved to Bedford, but I have three boys in the Saco School District. And I started in August working for the Saco School District in the PATHS Department, which is a behavioral room for children with some pretty severe behavioral issues. I don't really know which hat to put on first, I don't have a lot of time, but I think first I'm just going to put on the like employee of Saco Schools hat. I have never worked in a place where I felt more welcomed and supported than I do right now. And that is directly attributed to the leadership that we have, directly attributed. Our room, we have children that have severe issues. And we take up a room because the children have to go in there because they're having a really, really hard time and they can't be with other kids. And it amazes me when I see that man walking up the sidewalk to come and check on that room, a room that he helped to create. You know, we are ahead of the game as far as other schools go. There are other schools are not doing this. We have social workers, we have doctors, we have BHPs, I am a BHP. I'm working one-on-one with these children to help them to be in the classroom as much as possible because they're really, really good kids, but they are struggling due to trauma that they grew up with that was not in their control. We're ahead of the game. And I see him walking up the sidewalk, and he comes in, we had one particular student that almost can't leave the room because he's having such a hard time. And he came in and he said, "Bud, a couple more good days, and on Friday, I promise you, if you're safe, I'm going to come spend time with you." I was blown away. The superintendent is taking time out of his day to come help this one child to be successful and safe and be in the classroom. That amazed me. So just as far as, I've only worked at the school since August, but I don't plan on leaving anytime soon. And it's because of some of the people that are leading this school. We can talk about wet playgrounds, and we can talk about, I have a scratchy throat right now too, and it is not because of air, it is because I have a cold. But as a mom, I'm going to put the mom hat on right now, I just got a call. I had to go pick up my son from Parks and Rec because he had an aggression issue, and he couldn't stay there. And I literally thought to myself, unbelievable, I work with kids like this all day. And then I thought to myself, thank God, we are in the Saco School District? Because by the time he gets from pre-K, he's going to be, he's going to have a program in place like PATHS if this behavior continues, and we can't. So as far as pre-K goes, it's been amazing, and the teacher's been extremely supportive. And I directly attribute all of that to the leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Jessica Morris.
Hi, I am Jessica Morris, and I live at 17 Elm Street. I am a parent of a first grader at Fairfield and a pre-K student at a private preschool. I am here tonight to voice opposition to the renewal of the superintendent's contract. I want to focus on his lack of communication to parents and the hardships that puts on us when we're trying to do what is best for our children. He announced pre-K would be expanding in January without any details for us to be able to plan for the coming year. There was no location announced until Toddlin was announced in May, and no Plan B when it was clear soon after the announcement the pre-K would not go to Toddlin. Basically, he signed people up for a program before he had any place for them to even go. In the end, due to the lack of planning and communication, we chose to pull our son from the pre-K program and keep him in his private pre-K. There is not one single legal parking spot available at Fairfield if you are to go there during the day. There is also no outlet in the parking lot, which I have brought up before. Since there is no outlet, people will back out of the lot, and I have witnessed children almost get hit because of this. From what I know, the new pickup line policy was never approved from the Traffic and Safety Committee. The new pickup line does not follow the legal laws on School Street. It tells the parents to idle their cars where it says no parking, which then takes up space on School Street. There are cars legally parked on the other side of School Street that also takes up space. This then makes the school a one-way, School Street basically a one-way street. When someone is coming from either direction on School Street, they need to back up to allow the person to go. This simply is not safe. Recently, the city had the opportunity to fix the drainage problem and parking issues in Purple Park. This park has such a drainage problem that most days, the children cannot play on the playground or use the field. In the end, it's sad that they have to play on pavement space. They chose not to accept the recommendation of the Traffic Safety Committee. This would have added 20 more parking spaces. To me, that's a no-brainer. It would have fixed the field, the playground, and added parking with a safe outlet. Lastly, it is very disappointing that we have lost our art and music room due to the superintendent pushing a program in the school that was not mandatory without proper planning, where it would go and what space it would take away. Now we have art and music on a cart. Since parents have found out and are upset, it is now changing to library on a cart. The library room will become art and music room. It is clear we need to replace our elementary schools, but it is irresponsible to Kenny to add new programs or classroom, it is, sorry. It's irresponsible to continue to add new programs or classroom space while eliminating existing classrooms. It also is disappointing that we have to find this out from word of mouth or Facebook. I expect communication about the changes at our schools from our administration, but understand it is embarrassing to say library will now be on a cart. Thank you.
My name is Stacy Cody, 87 James Street, Saco. Been in the community for a long time. I was just looking at the mission statement and about the high quality and my son. You, some kids have a hard time with special needs and some kids excel, some kids are in the middle. Anakin has had a great experience at Fairfield School with first-grade teacher Danielle, second-grade teacher, Mrs. T. They learned how to, some kids struggle, they learn how to teach them. This summer, there was no, he loves summer school, and there was no summer school. So Dominic got him a tutor. They say, they say T is a powerful, you know? So it's not a weakness, it's powerful. So he helped get him a tutor. So we had a summer tutor. Now we have two tutors, so he studies, and we're continuing for him to learn at Burns. And we hope we continue progressing like he did at Fairfield. He's got great role models, his, the principal, vice principal, coaches are fantastic. So that's just where the high-quality teaching came in. I just wanted to thank them for, probably no one ever thanks them, but I wanted to. And then on a professional level, Dominic took care of one of the community, Robin He showed support for his coworkers, for his children, the kids, the students. He did everything he could, and we have had experience with this before. When we had an issue, we worked very closely with Thornton Academy. Same thing, lucky, we have a fantastic community, but Dom coordinated the whole thing, put it all together, did not say no, and gave the family and the community a chance to grieve, setting up counseling, moving on the best they can in a painful situation. So the education, thank you. Thank you for, for Robin, and thank you for helping him with a tutor.
Thank you. Next up is Rennie Menard.
Good evening. My name is Rennie Menard. I live at 440 Main Street in Saco, and I'm also the headmaster at Thornton Academy. I'd like to take a moment to express on behalf of myself and my administrative staff how much we appreciate the positive and collaborative working relationship we have with Superintendent DePatsy. We're in constant communication, I find him to be proactive, and we've been able to address and resolve a number of issues on behalf of Saco students. I also want to share with you that during Mr. DePatsy's tenure, we've seen a marked improvement in the academic preparation and the skills of Saco Middle School students entering Thornton Academy. Over the last five years, our SAT scores at Thornton Academy have improved dramatically, and we know that's a result of the good work that's been happening at Saco Middle School. I also want to share with you that three years ago, we began administering the PSAT ninth grade exam to incoming students at Thornton Academy, and we use that as a baseline to assess the academic preparation of students as they enter the academy. And for each of the three years we've done it, each year, Saco Middle School students improve in their achievement on each of those exams. So we know there are a lot of hard-working teachers in the district, we appreciate that. We see the results at Thornton Academy, and I would encourage you to renew Mr. DePatsy's contract. Thank you.
Next up is Louise Bertham.
Louise Bertham, 3 Glenhaven Circle. I'm here as a taxpayer and probably as a grandmother as well. I saw what my daughter went through getting my daughter ready for the pre-K program. I saw the lack of communications and how that was mishandled. I'm also concerned about the mishandling of the whole pre-K program, the whole business with the Toddlin, and the fact that it's probably at least cost the town almost $200,000 yet so far. It's a sign of mismanagement, and I affect, of course, it's going to be back the bottom line for older citizens that are on a fixed income. So because of this is total mismanaged from a financial point of view, I truly feel that the contract for the superintendent should not be renewed based on that. It, you don't get rewarded for making a big mess, okay? And there has not been good communication to any of the pre-K parents. And listening to parts of the meeting from Monday evening, you know, the vagueness of how much the legal fees have cost the city too far, there was no clear answer on that. So because of the whole mess, I am against the renewal of the contract for the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is John Woodcock.
I'd like to let pass on my opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Jennifer Preble.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Preble. I live at 236 Jenkins Road in Saco. I am a mother of a pre-K student. This evening, I'm going to be reading you a letter on the behalf of 50--
Jennifer, I'm sorry, can you bring out the mic?
I'm little, please forgive me. So let me restate this. My name is Jennifer, I'm from 236 Jenkins, I'm a pre-K mom, and I'm reading you a letter on the behalf of 51 teachers that are basically scared to speak because they're afraid to be terminated or retaliated against. So I'm going to read this letter, please. Dear School Board, we are writing this letter in order to express our deepest content with our current school district's culture. Many of us have worked for the Saco District for several years under various superintendents. We've experienced amazing, mediocre, and toxic leadership styles that have continued to do what we do best, serve our children of Saco. We are not writing this letter to speak ill of Mr. DePatsy. We recognize and appreciate the changes he has brought to our school district. He has advocated for professional development for all staff and implemented a model that rules, allows for growth and development to continue. Our pre-K program is an amazing addition to our community, and DePatsy's advocacy for special needs children has put into action programs that support our neediest students. With this being said, these big changes were made with poor planning and significant lack of communication, which has left staff struggling to fulfill the requirements of these program changes. Program changes need to be done metathetically, collaboratively, and with forethought. When the staff is left feeling unheard, unsupported, and silenced, as you can imagine, the culture becomes toxic. Leadership requires a team of collaborators who share the leader's vision and will do work in order to assume success. These are examples above reflective of Mr. DePatsy overall leadership style and should be taken into great consideration when voting for his renewal contract. It is concerning that the school board members stated that every teacher we spoke to wants DePatsy's contract renewed. As a governing body, the school board should be more concerned with the lack of attendance supporting DePatsy during the school board meetings versus those attending against. Keep in mind, disapproving staff are silenced and have yet, have yet seen the beginning of Mr. DePatsy's appointment as superintendent. Furthermore, tests, yes, the test scores are up, but have you asked the question at what cost to our children? We have a 10-minute conversation with any teacher and they'll clearly explain to you. We are writing this letter demanding for the school board to give us a leadership that will encourage questions, disagreements, without retribution, forethought, collaboration, and most of all, heal our district together as a whole. Sincerely, the requesting staff of a non-renewal of DePatsy's superintendent contract. So I'm advocating, I'm a social worker by trade, I am advocating for these teachers. I find it super concerning, very concerning, and just unacceptable that there's a work culture like this. It's not healthy, it's going to, if the teachers are stressed, it's going to be affecting our children. That's concerning for me with, I have a five-year-old in the pre-K program, and I have a 14-month-old that's going to be going through the Saco school systems. I really don't want to rethink that. Thank you. Please take that into consideration and have a great night.
Thank you. Next up is Jennifer Malloy-Pason.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Malloy. I am here as the administrator of the Parents of Saco Main Schools Facebook page, as well as a pre-K parent. I moved to Saco in 2013 and noticed a need for a Facebook group that allowed Saco parents to come together and discuss. At that time, there was one, which was deleted after the Saco school system left-- At that time, there was one, which was deleted after the Saco school system left the RSU and parents were like, where do we post? So I started a group. This group is used to inform, announce, share, and educate. The parent's information could vary from announcements about tryouts, event promotions such as school dances and PTO events, education such as articles related to child development, or a parent may post a concern about their child that's connected to the school. I have always monitored the group for slander or disrespectful comments and delete them as necessary. This group was very peaceful with no drama. I never had to block or delete anyone in this group until 2018 and there was rarely comments deleted, until October 30th, 2018, when an announcement came from the superintendent's office. At that point, more and more conversations became controversial as a divide formed and often the heart of the matter was a parent was either in support or against of a decision that the superintendent had made. Some examples are direct hires, financial decisions such as the pre-K. There has been some accusations that this group is filled with vigilantes. Unless the accuser has a different definition of vigilante, I hardly consider parents in opposition of renewal of a key administrator and making sure that parents and taxpayers have the facts to be an active vigilante. The fact is, we no longer have a local newspaper and most people now get their information from social media, at least the parents' demographic. It is in this group that parents found out about the issues surrounding pre-K and the expenditure of over $200,000 at this point for an empty building that we don't even own. Or that our K-2 schools no longer have a library, as mentioned. I don't think anybody in this room would ever say that children with special needs that need their own private room shouldn't have it, but to take it away from 400 other children that were using it doesn't make sense. I actually had a parent tell me today that they were afraid to ask a question in the group out of fear that their child would lose their IEP. This parent literally wanted to know what the cost was for the pre-K program, but was afraid that her child was gonna have his IEP taken away. But she decided when she waited, that it was more important for her to take that risk and give another parent who was afraid to ask a question, the courage to stand up for themselves and not be afraid of retribution for their child's education. This group is used as a voice and a portal for parents and in the past month, the parents have spoken. Over 310 signatures and the petition in the last week. The parents here today and the taxpayers have spoken. One last thing, if there is a tutoring program that allows children to have one-on-one tutors that's gonna be implemented, please let me know. I'd be happy to share that in our, our group. I'm sure there's at least 40 to 100 children out of the 1,800 in this school district that could use a one-on-one tutor. So please let me know when that program is created and what the cost is so I can let all the taxpayers know.
Thank you. Next up is Madison Buckley.
Hi, my name is Madison Buckley and I am an employee at the Saco School in support of Dominic DePatsy and the contract being renewed. I work at Fairfield in the PATHS program, the behavioral program. And, yeah, I mean Dom has been supportive every step of the way for that. That room would not be there if it wasn't for that. And I work in the school, the kids are absolutely fine with the carts thing, like it's not a big deal, this whole cart thing that everyone's freaking out about. It's not a big deal. The kids love it. There aren't crafts of scissors and paper brought to their room. Not a big deal. The kids who are unsafe and do not have resources but the school and that program need the room more than those kids in that library. It is a small school, it is not a big school and need that library. The carts are completely fine for Fairfield and a school that I work in. And, yeah, that's what I have to say on that. Thank you.
Next up is Nathan Johnston.
Nathan Johnston, 17 Elm Street. I have here a letter from a member that, or a resident that couldn't attend tonight, if that's all right. Can I read it?
Absolutely.
My name is Haley Posey and I have been a resident of Ward 6 in Saco for about two years. I grew up in Midcoast Maine, but left the state for college and graduate school. My husband Kyle and I had been living in Rhode Island for several years before we decided to move back home to Maine to raise our family. Kyle is an attorney for the federal government in Boston, so we needed to live near an Amtrak station. He is in Boston today, in fact. That is why I cannot attend tonight's meeting. As Kyle and I looked at communities where we might settle in Southern Maine, we were struck by Saco's beautiful landscape, great location, and kind community. Most importantly, we researched the schools and heard great things about Saco School District and teachers. We took the plunge and moved here. We were happy we did in many ways. We came to Saco with our two sons, now ages six and four, and we now also have a one-year-old daughter. As fairly new residents and taxpayers in Saco with young children, our primary focus and the issue that drives, that most drives us to the polls is education. Our children's teachers have been wonderful. We have been extremely disappointed with the actions of the superintendent under the oversight of the School Board. Most specifically, we are appalled by the decision to move ahead with the illegal totter in lease, which was wasted, which has wasted an exorbitant amount of taxpayers' money. The rollout of the pre-K program was hasty, poorly communicated, and confusing to most parents. While having universal pre-K in Saco was a boon for the city, guaranteeing parents a program absent an appropriate space for it was irresponsible and has resulted in a huge financial loss. It has also been a public relations nightmare, landing Saco on the regional news. Take a moment to imagine if the school district were a private company. If a manager like the superintendent squandered a huge sum of money on a building that was never used and mounting legal fees occurred as a result of a contract that should never have been signed, would that individual still be employed by the company? I highly doubt it. More than likely, the individual have lost his, his or her job immediately. This is unacceptable misuse of city resources, resources that could be put to, or put to use enriching the academic lives of Saco students. I am also in opposition to the relocation of space at Fairfield School, forcing art, music, and library onto a cart. I am truly surprised that the decision to make these changes were not mentioned to families. It is a shame that these important areas of the curriculum are being undermined in this way. As a librarian myself, I could go on at length about the relationship between school, library programs, and literacy outcomes. In closing, I do not mean to overplay my own family's point of view. I am in favor of policies that benefit all students of all abilities. I do, do think it is imperative for the School Board and the superintendent to know we seek leadership that takes the long view. We would rather live in a community that delays the creation of a new program for a year or two in order to plan properly and allocate financial resources and space fairly and equitably. The current leadership does not make us proud to live in Saco. It does not reflect well on our community. It makes us doubt our decision to have settled here. All Saco students and cities' taxpayers deserve better. I believe we should seek a new superintendent whose priorities are better aligned with the needs of Saco families. Thank you, Haley Posey, 21 Rumory Street, Saco, Maine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Louis Waterhouse, 6 Graceland Acres. Come to you tonight once again to ask the School Board to not renew the superintendent's I know that you heard a lot of people up here tonight and I saw the list. There's quite a few people gonna speak after me. I just, I don't want to, you know, talk about any of our personal issues or, or, you know, how much it's affected us personally. I just want to get to the core of this is, this is not a question of, you know, was PATHS a worthwhile cause? We would all be in agreement that it is. We are not up here to question whether or not expanding pre-K was a good idea or a worthwhile endeavor because we are all in agreement that it was. That's not what's in question here. What's in question is the decision-making that went to those conclusions. We, as we all know, we've all been, you know, I'm, I'm apparently one of the vigilantes on the Facebook group, so you've seen me up here many times talking about the pre-K debacle with totter in. Fortunately, we will see that come to a conclusion. Unfortunately, it's at a very high cost, not only monetarily to the taxpayers, but also to the children of where that money could have better been spent. A lot of the decisions that have been made that get us to where we're at now are the ones that we're all questioning for the people that do not want to see this contract renewed. This individual has developed a pattern and a history of making decisions that they feel that they're above the, of the rule of law, they're above the rules that are set forward. It was well-known that totter in was not gonna be a viable choice and still, the communication went out to the parents that it was going to be at totter in. So effectively doubling down, saying, well, you know, we're gonna force the hand on this. This is not somebody that we want in this position. Another superintendent could get us PATHS. Another superintendent could expand pre-K, but they could do it correctly. I apologize, Mr. Mayor, but the School Board meeting is not governed by the three-minute timeframe. Council is. I would just ask the School Board to really think about this carefully. And while you're thinking about it, I want you to think about what's happened here this evening. Look behind me. Look what has happened to our city. Look at the division that this has caused. There was people jockeying to get up there to sign their names so they could be the last ones to get the last word here. We have a bunch of foolishness going on with both sides seeing who they can clap the loudest after their people speak. This is the issue. This individual has caused this issue. It is up to you as the School Board to rectify this issue. Get somebody in this position that will bring us back together. Get someone in this position that will make informed, not hasty, decisions that are best for not only the children, but for this community. If that's not the case, and the decision is made to ignore what is happening here tonight, you've heard it said by other people here, you are going to leave the citizens no choice. They will take it out of your hands. That will either be in the form of a recall, and you can laugh all you want, Mr. Cardiff, it could be a recall, at the very least, nobody here will forget what happens tonight come November, when three of these seats come up for reelection. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Before we go up to the next speaker, I just want to point out that in the Public Participation School Board Meeting Guidelines, that the, excuse me, the minutes of each public media, the mayor may limit the time allotted for comments on a particular topic, as well as the time of each individual may speak. However, the public session roster has a three-minute timeline up at the top and we've asked all folks to partake in that, to accommodate everybody that's here to speak tonight. So I would just like to follow that format moving forward for the three minutes. Up next, we have Sue Smith.
Good evening. I'm Sue Smith. I think all of you probably know me. I've been a teacher here in Saco for 45 years. I grew up in Saco and Saco is near and dear to my heart. I got up to speak because I am passionate about following procedures. As a teacher, we have supervision evaluation procedure and I've been on that committee since the inception. We go through proper channels for supervision evaluation. We give the person feedback, we give them help to improve, and we give them time. Everybody deserves due process in that type of format. There's a supervision evaluation process in place for administration, including the superintendent. So I have a problem with being evaluated through social media. I recall standing, not standing here, but being in the audience last year when social media was trying to do this with a teacher. It was not okay then. It's not okay now in this situation, nor is it okay to do this to any other person in the future. We have processes in place to take care of this. Social media is not guided by truth and factual information. Claims by some people are that truth is not really necessary. It's the perception that's out there that's important and blame being promoted on particular people, that's what's important. Most of you know, I do not have to work. I have passed retirement age and therefore I could have retired several years ago. Why am I still here? I am here because I love Saco. I love Saco schools. I grew up in the Saco schools. I've been teaching here since I graduated from college. I'm passionate about children. So I value this district. We have, I've been through lots of superintendents. We have a lot of really good things going on in Saco schools. We've had lots of changes over 45 years. Change is never easy. You know, sometimes change is great, sometimes it's hard to see where you're going. We have now shown that some of the changes that have been made over the last five years have increased student, student learning, which is something that we've talked about for years. The needs of our children have changed so dramatically in 45 years, I cannot even begin to tell you. As I hear people talk about the displacement of library, art, and music, in the 45 years I've been here, we've had art, library, music on the cart, off and on, off and on, depending on the particular needs in the schools. If we weren't standing here tonight, if we didn't have the PATHS programs and some of the programs that are in place, instead of talking about art on the cart, we're talking about teacher and student assaults. So I urge you to think about our children and all the things that are happening that are good for them right now.
Thank you. Next up is Kevin Roach.
Hello, Kevin Roach, 18 Vines Road, dog sitter, father of two teenagers. Just a quick thing, there was a name, she doesn't live here, but I'd like to correct that Jen Norman was named and I want to defend her reputation that she did the best she could when she was here. Also, we need a higher level to attain than art on a cart and library on a cart and it was very discouraging to hear clapping for that. So I just want to make that clear. And also, social media helped make changes at SMS, revealed the pre-K, and then got now up to 312 on the, on the petition. Tonight, I just mostly want to speak about numbers. First number, 100%-- First number, 100%. That is the great staff and teachers that each one of my kids had going through K through eight. 100%. Special thanks to my daughter's favorite teacher, Mr. Goff, who she visited during senior week. You visit one teacher possibly, she chose Mr. Goff. 10%. 10% are those names on that petition that I know. 90% is everybody else. 1.6 million, that is the amount of dollars you have to get to the state to get your $1 million back in revenue for main care billing. Zero, that's the revenue you have to date. $630,000, the amount you're over budget on Thornton Academy special education dollars. $200,000, the amount you were over last year for TA sped. Fool me once. Forty, the number of new staff at K through eight this year. Twenty-two, the number of new students. Forty-nine, the number of new students at Thornton Academy freshman year from last year's eighth grade. That's 20% that are choosing Thornton Academy after getting through K through eight. $550,000, that's how much those students cost going to TA, and we didn't get a chance to educate them. Why did those parents decide that? $1,000, that's the bill from Drummond Woodson that would be to review that lease for pre-K. This is a FOIA request as of right now to get that bill from Drummond Woodson. $62,000 for the legal fees on pre-K, $144,000, not two months of rent. Finally, the final numbers, two, four, and six. Those are the wards, my ward as well, that are up for reelection in November. I absolutely sympathize with you guys. I was there on council. But you will own four years. I absolutely sympathize with you, but you will own this decision tonight and own the next budget process with the school administration. And you will owe an explanation to the whole public after your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Sarah Baines.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Baines. I reside at 17 Winter Street Extension in Saco, Maine. I'm here to stress to you, the school board, and parents present this evening, why Dr. DePatsy's contract should absolutely be renewed. First, let me start by saying, in the 21 years I have worked in this district, I have had at least eight different superintendents, none of which ever had a strategic plan or a direction for our district. Dr. DePatsy implemented a strategic plan which has moved our district forward. This strategic plan includes responsibilities of students, teachers, and parents. It takes a village, and now because of Dr. DePatsy, this village has some direction. Two, our schools are safer than they ever have been. What parent doesn't want safe schools? Our schools are safer now because of the expansion of our PATH programs. These programs have provided children access to the curriculum through a controlled environment that allows them to receive the education to which they are entitled. Three, now we have pre-K. This didn't exist prior to Dr. DePatsy, DePatsy's vision and leadership for Saco. Again, proof that Saco is moving forward. Number four, our PG&E. For those of you don't know what that acronym is, it's for professional growth and education. Never has Saco had a professional growth and evaluation process that has been meaningful and consistent. Dr. DePatsy has instituted a process that ensures Saco hires and maintains highly qualified teachers. In my experience, Dr. DePatsy is a visible presence in the schools. The students know who he is. He visits classrooms and interacts with the students and staff. As you know, the best decisions are made with firsthand knowledge of what is transpiring. Finally, Dr. DePatsy is a good leader. A true leader makes tough decisions that may or may not be popular. Dr. DePatsy is that leader. It is for these reasons that Dr. DePatsy's contract should be renewed without hesitation or worried of threats. Let's keep this district moving forward, and I thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Tim Kane.
Good evening, folks. My name is Timothy Kane. I'm the principal at CK Burns, a resident here at Winter Street, as well as a parent of students within the district. After listening to comments from multiple people up here, first of all, I thank all those people for coming up and giving your voices as they should, and for us for listening to those voices. But I would like you all to please keep in mind that many of these comments come out of very personal attacks. And these personal attacks, I believe, come from people that just do not understand the innermost workings that go on for someone to run that needs to run a very large district. I have worked in several districts from the position of coach, ed tech, teacher, assistant principal, principal and superintendent. So I know what it takes to run a large district, and having run a large district myself, and also to be at the helm when any of the criticism comes out, because that will always happen. I see it also as a principle. As a matter of fact, I hear from other administrators within the district that were just the other day taking criticism, well, they're out doing bus duty, cleaning off people's car from snow. We have people complaining that they must have too much time on their hands, or they wouldn't be out cleaning snow. So a lot of the things you hear really just because people don't understand the inner workings. We have a superintendent that understands curriculum, instruction, assessment better than any superintendent I have known. We have a superintendent who always puts the needs of the children first, supports us as staff, and finds ways to meet our needs. He's created a strategic plan when he came to this district as part of a clear entry plan within the district, coming into the district. Along with that plan, we have a clear focus on early intervention through coaching, targeted intervention with strategic goals that focus on both achievement and social, emotional learning. He has successfully implemented the abbreviated Wednesdays, and we now have sufficient time for that professional development that we all need and a clear focus on our PLCs, our professional learning communities. All of this has been done with collaboration from the staff. My newly implemented PG&E, a professional growth evaluation system that Ms. Baines spoke about, is one of the best in the state and focuses on their growth mindset. As you know, special education can take on a life of its own. Dr. DePatsy fully understands the innermost workings and has helped establish a new and strong program to meet the needs of all of our students. He has also supported the professional development needed to support our staff. The negative attacks are personal, and unfortunately, instead of collaboration and coming forward with the working solutions, they have chosen to personally attack our superintendent. And remember, we have what, 20,000 people in this city? So when the votes come, it's got to come from 20,000 people. We look, we need to look at what all that Dr. DePatsy has done for our district and will continue to do for our children. And you also, at the end of the day, it's really about the education of our students, and you are about to hear, because of these programs he's implemented, our grades are coming up, and you will hear that shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes the public comment section of tonight. We're moving on to agenda item seven. Thank you for everyone that took this opportunity to come up and speak. It's, it's not always easy to come up and speak before a board, so thank you for that. Superintendent's report, agenda item seven.
Yep. So on here, I think we sent in the packet the MSABA report. That's just basically what the board members are doing around the state, so that's for your review. I also want to thank everyone out, everyone to come, coming tonight. It's been very, it's great. It's not that many people here usually, so it's great to have people coming. And thank you to report out on a few items. I also want to offer huge congratulations to our LEGO robotics team. Most people don't know this, but this past weekend, the team completed the state championship. The team was awarded first place for innovation and strategy, and we are so proud of their hard work and effort. Last year, the school board approved this rad for our STEM teacher, who is currently working with this LEGO robotics team and spearheading incredible projects at CK Burns. So go CK Burns and go Holly Trotter here. So another good news, it's not necessarily good news, I don't know where Rainey went, but I think for sure, for budget purposes, because there's been a lot of numbers thrown out here. So those numbers change periodically, and here's a number that will change. So we think the MAT, and I know the budget committee hasn't met yet, has come in at 1.6, so that is a $250,000 savings to our budget. So I just want to make sure people understand that. It's good news. Today, I met with one of our math coaches to review the recent release district MEA math scores. We will do, I'll meet with the literacy coaches also to talk about that data as well. I'm proud to report, student achievement scores have increased in every single grade level. And that is not obviously due to me, that is due to my unbelievable staff that work for us. Thank you very much. And Rainey reported out, too. He did a great job with reporting out on the PSAT and SAT scores, but they have seen a jump in that achievement level. So we are seeing kids going into Thornton Academy ready. That obviously saves us money, too, because the remedial courses go down and kids go on to college. So good for that. I'm extremely proud of our students, coaches, and teachers and instructional staff that have worked with our Eureka Math Program. We went to this program, it is working, it is hard, it is not easy, and they have, and I can see faces going off, but it is paying off for our children. I really thank you all for working with that. And also, the middle school, they don't have a particular program, there's yays and nays about that, but the teaching pedagogy that they're using is working, obviously, if you look at the data. I'm also very pleased to have some community members reach out regarding questions they have heard or statements communicated through outside mediums, mainly social media. I would like to take the time to say I'm welcome anybody with questions, some of the people that spoke tonight, I have never met you in my life, I know one person came that spoke tonight, and we had a two-hour conversation, which was very good, and we'll try to work on some of her concerns. My greatest concern is that we enter the new year and the budget season, it is the unsustainable comments made on social media. We, as a district, are working on providing more factual and transparent information in the new year, including a lot of numbers that get thrown around. We thank you for checking directly with the source. With any concerns you may have, we strive to create supportive and professional environment for our staff members, and ask you to remember that this environment is created for our children. As a district, our number one goal is always to put the needs of our children first. We work very hard to create positive, healthy cultures in our school. Please join us in this. Our doors are always open, we welcome face-to-face conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the school board members? The superintendent's report, no? Moving on to agenda item eight, chairs report. School Board Member Emerson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bring that a little closer. End of the year, always a time to reflect and look back. It's the end of a decade in this case, also a time to look back and reflect, but I'll focus on the last four years, because that's how long I've been here on the board. Had the pleasure of working with Lynn and Beth over that entire four-year period, Steve a couple of years, and Art, Stan, and Emily over the last year, as well as Dominic over the last four since I joined. Exciting stuff has happened in this district. Right? I heard almost to a T, everyone mentioned pre-K. Whether happy about the rollout or not, I think everyone has been happy with pre-K. We are a leader in the state, and that's pretty awesome. Some may not remember, Lynn and Beth, four years ago, when we first, well, at least we first got started, we moved to late start. That was one of the first things we did as a board, looking at scientific evidence and what was best for students in our district, to look at their ability to learn in those years, those pre-teen and teenage years, when scientific evidence shows shifts in melatonin and the changes that happen. And the improved well-being, not to mention the test scores, but the improved well-being of our students. We heard a number of people mention the strategic plan. What can a board do without a strategic plan? So that's pretty awesome to have had in place over the last three years, and we're in that now evaluation year, to look back, take that year to evaluate how that strategic plan worked before launching into a new one. Lots of talk about PATHs, BHPs, and the work that's been done in the schools to create a safer, more conducive educational environment for all our students. We're on a list for a new school. Again, Lynn, Beth, one of the first things I remember doing was voting for a new school. I think it was February of joining the board, and we saw the need, I think that it was mentioned early on during the public comment, it was mentioned about the need for improvements in our infrastructure. Art spoke Monday night, laid out a great infrastructure plan moving forward, a lot of buy-in from the public that was there, as well as the city council. So again, while we wait on the state list for a new school, which, as Stan always reminds us, is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for this community, so again, looking at the infrastructure. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention test scores. It's a, I like to look at the anecdotes, the stories that are told, the individual students that have been successful, but if you look at the overall success of a district, you can't measure that except for, well, in one way to measure that, I guess, would be through test scores, which have improved in all sorts of categories, the state testing as well as PSATs. The academic rigor of those entering TA, I think we heard tonight, as well as most recently, the success of LEGO robotics, right? Something, a STEM opportunity that is really building outside of just a, the curriculum and expanding out in new opportunities for all our students. Over the last four years, since I joined the board, it's also been a personal journey. We moved to Maine back in 2013 because both of my in-laws were sick. My mother-in-law was diagnosed with MS 30 years ago, and she passed away four years ago. And in August, my father-in-law lost his battle with Parkinson's after 15 years. It's been a lot on our family. It's been a lot on my six-year-old and my four-year-old, and it's been a lot of nights away from them. A lot of nights here, a lot of nights at negotiations, and it's gotten to a point where I've had to start bringing kids, my kids, to meetings, and I have not been able to provide for them in the way that I should be. Six months ago, I was also promoted at work, and two weeks ago, my team tripled, which means more time for me down in Boston. I rushed here tonight from Boston, and I've been doing that more and more often. I've had to miss meetings because of it and have not been able to give it my all. And I can't continue to give it my all. It has been an absolute honor to serve this community. I hope that someday I'll be able to serve the community again, but effective immediately, I am resigning from the school board. So again, thank you. It was said, thank you to everyone who showed up tonight. I, in making this decision, forgot that it was going to be very populated in the room and thought I would be able to slip away quietly. and thought I would be able to slip away quietly. And I underestimated the power of the public voice and everyone who's out here tonight. So thank you again for the opportunity. Thank you to Dominic for your leadership in the district. Thank you to each one of the board members. It has truly been an honor and a pleasure working with each one of you, and I look forward to seeing this district continue on its great path. Good night.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Appreciate you allowing me the ability to do so. Thank you. I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, let's get these policies. Just for right now.
Right now. I won't ask for one, but...
Listen, we're good till June. Um, yes.
Okay, we're coming back to, back in session. We are now at Agenda Item 10, Board Subcommittee's. First off with a report from the Personnel Subcommittee.
That would be me. Nothing to report out on, we are utilizing the time for the Personnel Committee to do teacher negotiations.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda 10B, Finance.
Yes, the, on November 6th, we're referring to minutes of the meeting for the Finance Committee. There was at that meeting a child count, where the student count was up 23 students, K to 12. Actually, it's down somewhat in the high school, and it does not include the additional students in the expanded, additional, additional 64 students in the expanded pre-K program. We also discussed the last, the financials for last year, in which we had a positive fund balance of $1.26 million. And the, and we also discussed current financials, which at that point, and that's November 6th, were 30.41% of budget. There are several, there's a note that there are several areas that we'll be keeping an eye on over the next few months, and some of those were discussed with the joint council meeting with us, and, but that's for a later date here. The, as of that meeting, we also discussed the lack of space in schools, especially K to 2, where the school board has visited recently and were given tours by building principals. We're very aware, not only are we aware of the situation, but if there's a report from the Infrastructure Committee, they, there was a, this was the biggest topic of discussion in the joint meeting with the council on Monday, which was a very positive discussion of moving forward in the community. We've heard a lot of comments tonight about problems of shortage of space. We are, on the board, very aware of that, we have a committee working on that, the council's going to be working on that, and we share that concern for space. And that's all, that is all in that report.
Thank you. Next up, we'll hear from the Infrastructure Committee.
Mr. Mayor, before we go to infrastructure, I'm thinking that we actually skipped over the, just the staff report about combined principal and directors, which we actually just received here tonight, so I don't think any of us have had a chance to review it, but I would just like to note that it is here and that probably at the next meeting, we could have looked at that and maybe have some questions for those directors and principals. Okay, for infrastructure, in our packet, we have the minutes from November 21st. I wanted to just note that in the attendance, it does not actually mention our superintendent who was present and who is actually referred to down under Number 3 as having had some comment to make, but just to correct that, we had sort of, I guess you could say, five items that we discussed, and although this is sort of a summary, for sure, of our meeting that day, we did have some comments on the infrastructure improvement plan, we talked about the five-year plan, Stan had some comments to make. We talked about the modular buildings at Fairfield and Young, and talked a little bit about the timeline for that. That was also mentioned again at council on Monday night about what the timeline is for that, and as I understand it, we're moving along in a timely fashion on that. So we talked about the whole question of what do we do long-term about a location for pre-K, and I don't think we came to any conclusion about that exactly, but it was mentioned again at council workshop this last Monday. Chris Stryker talked to us about the technology five-year plan, and we talked a little bit about that in relation to new school construction. I don't know if anyone wants to comment on that particular aspect of it, but again, we're always trying to upgrade our technology, making sure that it's working well. And then we talked again, and we've heard of this before, about the possibility of a RAD coming up for the phones at Saco Middle School, which we did not do last budget season. So that's kind of a rundown of the Infrastructure Committee. We do have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow afternoon, however, I might not be able to make that due to another family consideration, so if everyone can attend other than me, I will just look for everyone else to review for me what happened.
We also kind of talked on Monday, too, with the City Council, so I think we have a lot of those, I think we would review what we talked about, but I think in January, we can reach out for some of the recommendations, because we, I did get a couple of emails from City Councils with recommendations for, from what Art recommended, so, to add to our group. So I think that's, and we can do that and then have another meeting.
Very good, and I was going to ask Art if he wanted to make any comment about his presentation on Monday, this last Monday night, perhaps, perhaps not. Art, did you have anything that you wanted to mention about the meeting on Monday where you made a presentation to council? Art? Probably not. Did you want to mention anything about your presentation to council on this last Monday night? It's okay, the superintendent has said that we're going to be discussing your presentation that you made to council last Monday, and some recommendations have come back, so that will be upcoming in the next few Infrastructure Committee meetings.
We have a meeting tomorrow night.
Yes, we do. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Strategic Committee.
That, Mr. Mayor, would also be me, I think, or maybe Emily. We have actually had, missed a few meetings recently, we missed one just recently because of the snow event, et cetera, but we're still moving on with trying to review all of our policies and update them, and you will see on our agenda a little bit later here, again, first and second readings of policies that we've recently been reviewing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Negotiations.
I'll take this one. So we are ongoing with the teachers. I want to say it's actually very, we're using a different system this year, and it's very pleasant, everyone's listening to each other's, we have opposite ideas sometimes, but it's respectful, and it's actually enjoyable, and so, we're just saying something, no, I'm only teasing. So we've set up three more meetings, starting in January, I believe, and we started early, but we're hoping by budget season, we'll have an idea of what's going on, so we'll be able to have a more accurate budget moving forward.
Thank you.
And the only thing I'm going to add is the Stipend Committee continues to meet to pull those stipends together, because we've added a few, changed a few, and we'll be pulling that in to probably the last negotiation piece of that, so just to let the other board members know that that's what we're doing.
Next up is the School Board Liaison to the City Council.
Yes, I just want to mention and reiterate that there was a very positive meeting with the City Council. I think basically everybody was there from, on both sides, and the thing that we have to do as a community, in my view, I'm just, I'm taking for myself, we have to be working together to get results. That's something that we are very conscious of, and I think I can speak for everybody on the school board, of working closely with the council. Communications, of all the things we've heard tonight, a lot of it had to do with communications problems. We need to improve on that. But the way to do it is to work positively with people, with the council, with members of the community who have ideas. We welcome that, but the way to do that is to pull people together and not break them apart. I can tell you, I'll give you a little personal history myself, I spent 25 years directing schools myself. I retired from that a long time, after a long time of working with schools in New Jersey, New York, and here in Maine. And the way in which you get results is to work together, and you're seeing some of those results occurring right now, and you must get behind your educational people. If you're not behind them, we don't have an education system here. So it's okay to criticize, but we must work together, and that's what's happening with the council. As long as I'm here, I'm going to work for that. Thank you.
Recognizing School Board Member Moaston.
If I could continue on for one moment with what Steve brought up. That's why we can't wait for the state to come up with a check before we start doing anything. We need to start looking at what we need to do for our community and our children now, so that when the state... so that when the state finally comes through with the money, if that's what we're going to do, we'll have a plan to go forward with. At this point, there is no plan. Not even the one that existed five years ago is applicable to what we have now.
Thank you. That wraps up the agenda item 10, Board Subcommittee Reports. Moving on to agenda item 11, Old Business. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the second reading of policy JICIA Weapons Violence and School Safety, JICA Student Dress, and JICC Student Conduct on School Buses.
There has been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
School board member Johnston.
I guess I'd like to remind us that policies are kind of a living, breathing thing, and that some of these particular policies, particularly the one relating JICIA, relating to school safety, is something that we probably need to review on almost a continual basis to make sure that we are doing the best we can to ensure that school safety. So I just wanted to remind us all that, you know, it could be next month that we need to come back and review this, or it could be next year, but certainly we need to be always mindful that this is a really important to-review policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. School board member Leary.
Yes.
School board member Walters.
Yes.
School board member Shiman. School board member Tardif.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
School board member Mosden.
Yes.
Just make sure to speak into the mics, so everyone can hear you. And school board member Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 6-0. Moving on to New Business, Agenda Item 12. Is there a motion? School board member Walters.
I move we approve the first reading of policy JICE Student Publications, JICE-R Student Publication Procedures, JICJ Student Use of Cell Phones and Other Electronic Devices, JICK Bullying, JICK-R Bullying Administrative Procedure, JICK-E1 Bullying and Cyberbullying Investigation Form, JICK-E2 Saco School Department Bullying Investigation Form, JICK-E3 Bullying and Cyberbullying Remediation Form, and JICK-E4 Saco School Department Bullying Reporting Investigation and Intervention/Resolution Process.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
School board member Johnston seconds. Any discussion?
Just, just to say again, just to impress again upon us that these are obviously very important policies that relate to situations that we want to be very careful about, and we want to avoid having bullying in our schools. So, you know, just a reminder that some of the, these are somewhat regulated by law, but at the same time, they're, they're good for us to review in the future before too many months go by. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. School board member Leary.
Yes.
School board member Walters.
Yes.
School board member Shiman.
Yes.
School board member Tardif.
Yes.
School board member Mosden.
Yes.
School board member Johnston.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0. Moving on to Agenda Item 13. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
Yes, I, I move we enter into an executive session for the purpose of evaluation of employee pursuant, pursuant to one MRSA, what is the next symbol?
Subsection.
Subsection 4056A with possible action.
Thank you. There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, school board member Leary.
Yes.
School board member Walters.
Yes.
School board member Shiman.
Yes.
School board member Tardif.
Yes.
School board member Mosden.
Yes.
School board member Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you. We are now in executive session at 8:15. We are meeting downstairs in the downstairs conference room, downstairs conference room. Thank you.
I'd rather that. You know, if we didn't talk so much, we could have had eight hours. I missed the topic, Jamie.
Another death. During the time during the day, it's just. Please consider. A couple of clean things. Why don't you put that foil in the back of your vehicle? In the back, I did. Picks up, picks up sound. And everything you have in the back there. Well, that's one of the things that I was wondering about because the last hour, it was something that one of the problems was if the operation didn't function well, you lost your hero.
I don't know that I'd take that risk.
That's a good point.
You're not. How'd you get out?
That hits. Call what he drafted.
Again, for us.
No, go ahead.
What a word.
That narrative you did. And we'll take a narrative back then with Putsawo.
Is there? Oh, yeah. I didn't know that until I was in the first. I was the best with India. I would put it.
They're now, they're right, they're doing Putsawo. You think that's funny?
We're back. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
So motion and a second to come out of executive session. Roll call vote. School board member Leary.
Yes.
School board member Walter.
Yes.
School board member Shimon.
Yes.
School board member Tardif.
We're approving the.
Coming out of executive sessions. Yes. School board member Marsden and school board member Johnston.
Yes.
Okay, that is a six oh vote to come out of executive session. Is there a motion from executive session?
Yes. I move the school board renew the school superintendent's contract for a period of two years ending June 30th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? School board member Walters.
I just wanted to take an opportunity to just share a few comments before we go into our open vote. I wanted to just start by sharing my appreciation to everyone who took the time to reach out, whether it was via phone, email, public comment, to really share your thoughts and opinions on this matter. Certainly want to just give a shout out to our fellow board members here. This has not been an easy time and I've just really appreciated our thoughtful conversations and how much consideration has gone into this decision. Regardless of the outcome this evening, I do hope that we will continue to have open dialogue when it comes to matters of the school department across all fronts. In addition to all the feedback that I've received and my own personal observations over the last 12 months, I've taken into consideration the following data points while forming my vote for this evening. First and foremost, the results of the 360 evaluation, which shines a spotlight on the individual strengths and areas of growth, the academic outcomes of the district and progress towards achieving our strategic plan, and really the historical footprint of district leadership over the last 20 years. While it has been made very clear to me and I'm sure others that we have a lot to work on, certainly when it comes to communication and transparency and public relations on all levels, I do believe our district is making great strides when it comes to meeting the educational needs of all the children in our community. Comments?
Thank you. Further discussion? School board member Shimon and then.
Yes, I feel, I also appreciate hearing from people, both positive and negative. I think it's very important. I think on the positive side, what I've heard has a lot to do with strength in moving forward in leadership, not just from the superintendent, but from a leadership team of people working together. That is, in my experience, really important to the success of an educational program. And that is something we can be proud of because it isn't easy to put together those teams. I do feel that the superintendent is a strong leader and the flip side of leadership is you have to bring people with you. Maybe we could have done better in some circumstances, but I don't believe you can make even positive change without some repercussion because it's a difficult process. I think we've gone through that and I think that there, we see tremendous improvement, we see improvement in the students, we see improvement going into Thornton Academy, we see close relations with the headmaster at Thornton Academy. In general, we see a lot of good things. Where we are weak, as I see it, is in communications. A lot of what we heard today had to do with that and because people don't quite understand the situation as it really is happening. And that's where we all have to work together to find ways, including our board, in my opinion, to develop means and communications to bring people into the process, not, they should stay on the outside and shoot at us, but we should work together. And that is where we have a real opportunity now. We've come a long ways and I salute where we've come, but I think we have a long ways to go and we need to get, galvanize the community better. Thank you.
Thank you. School board member Marsden.
First of all, I want to thank the input from everybody from Saco and the school system that I've never seen so much email come to me about any topic that we've cut upon in this one. And I would like to assure everybody, at least speaking for myself, the emails and verbal conversations, walking down the street was sometimes a challenge in the cases of meeting people. But I took those comments, which were very varied, into account in what we were, what we did here this evening. And so to differ a little bit from Steve, there were concerns that needed to be addressed. And part of what we, in the last couple hours or so, did was set it up in such a way that those concerns are going to be, at least in part, attended to because the validity of those comments. So things that are going to be done organizationally are going to address those issues. I'm not going to go through all of them now, but we will be talking about those and what's being done to attend to those. And I think it's important to recognize that. That's a step forward for establishing unity because one of the things I would like to say is that the communications I received, I've never received such a diverse group of communications. Over here and over here, nothing in the middle. And that made it difficult to address those, but we are, we're going to be trying, especially the board and the things that we're going to be working on with the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? School board member Johnston.
Thank you. I think we, we've all thought long and hard about this decision tonight. We've all been approached by a lot of, with a lot of different opinions from a lot of different people. It has been challenging and as Stanley just pointed out, the division between the opinions has been like one or the other. It's pretty, nothing in the middle. It's mostly on one side or the other. And as board members, it's a little hard to navigate all of that. But I think that in the end, we also have to look into our own conscience or conscientious and say, what do I feel at the gut level? So my vote tonight is going to reflect what I feel at the core. It also is going to be a commitment towards working past the issues that we very obviously have had of late, working past those issues for the greater good of our educational system. So my vote tonight will reflect what I truly feel I have to do, but if we vote to renew the superintendent's contract, I certainly am going to work hard to try and remain an active board member with, you know, the pursuit of improvement all across the district in education for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. School board member Leary.
I thank you, everybody, for your opinions. I value all of you guys on our board. I will say that we were, we did the 360 review. We looked at that very closely. There is definitely strength. There's definitely weaknesses, as there is in every single one of us and as the board as a whole. But I have to look and think about what I feel is best for the city of Saco. And that really means we need to look at, I've said this in the beginning, if we all focus on the children and what's best for the children, everything else will fall into place. And yeah, there'll be some bumps and big mountains through that journey, but I think if we all work together and we're clear on our direction and what our expectations are, we can get through that. And so my vote will reflect on that tonight. And I believe Dr. DePatsy has, having children in the school system for many years, I have seen a lot that Sue has seen, not quite 45, but, and I can tell you for a fact that children are getting a better education today than some of my older kids I've ever got. And there's more unification. There is a better culture and yes, we still have, we have to keep working on that because it's never going to be perfect unless we accept change and we all want to strive to get better. But, and TA, that whole communication with TA, it's improved greatly. So, and I, being on negotiations, I've gotten to see a whole new light because as a board member, the reason I find the 360 so valuable is because I can tell you what I can see as a board member, but I don't know what's happening in the classrooms because I'm not in there every day. And what I hear is what's happening, education is a whole new animal these days compared to what it was even 10 or 15 years ago. We've got the opioid crisis. We have so many mental health issues. We have so many physical issues. We have so much, you know, the autism spectrum, there's so many issues that we never had to even deal with even 10 or 15 years ago. And, and so I applaud the teachers and the administration for what they do because it's really opened my eyes. And so my vote tonight will reflect all of that.
Thank you. Any further? Thank you. Any further discussion? School board member Tardif.
Haven't been on the school board for more than a year, and heard a lot of things when I first came on, pros and cons. Every time I saw something I didn't like, or I thought superintendent shouldn't have done, I went right to his office. I didn't talk behind his back, we spoke face to face. Found good results, he always treated me fair, and was always upfront. I think more of that has to be done with him. I can't think we can have a school board that just goes up and votes no on everything he wants. I think we have to discuss it, be upfront with him, and him with us. He's been told that several times, and I think he's coming around, and I think the school board's coming around to getting along better as far as cooperating together. It wasn't like that when I first came on, and I see it coming more and more. Therefore, I will support him for two years, which is what I talked to him about to begin with. I didn't want to go for three, I said, give us two. You had your survey done on you, you have your weak points, just like everybody else, you're not perfect, neither am I. However, give us a chance to bring what you're weak at up. And that's what he's willing to do.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing no further, oh, school board member Leary.
Can I add one more point?
Sure.
It's something that we have discussed, and I just want to put this out there to everybody. We, we've heard both sides of the story, and there's validity in both sides. But I want to extend the invitation to anybody. If there's fear of retaliation, if there's any concerns that need to be brought to the administration, you start there, you go have a face to face, like Art says. I've found that to be very useful and very helpful. And then, if you don't get anywhere, then you go through the steps. The steps are domed in policies, but I urge people, when they have these concerns, to make sure that everyone's aware of that, so that we don't get to a position like we are now. We should have been able to be dealing with this right along, so I'm just putting that out there, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further before we take a vote? Okay. Roll call vote, school board member Leary.
To renew DUMPS?
On the motion to renew the contract for two years.
Contract, yes.
School board member Walters.
Yes.
School board member Scheiman. School board member Tardif.
Yes.
School board member Mazden. School board member Johnston.
No.
The motion passes 5-1, and is there a motion to adjourn? Has a motion moved second? Has a motion moved in second? All in favor? It's unanimous, 6-0, we are now adjourned. Thank you very much.